Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners. This is our regular scheduled meeting for August the 5th, 2019. We're meeting tonight at the Madison Town Hall, and I'd like to thank all of the folks representing Madison for the use of your building tonight. As you know, we work from a prepared agenda. The first item on the agenda is our invocation. At this time, I'm going to ask Pastor William Phillips from the Fountain of Youth Church in Madison to come forward to the mic and lead our invocation. He will be followed by Captain Jason White with the Madison Police Department, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd all stand, please.
Let us pray. Lord, as we consider this moment and time, it is our personal obligation to at least say thank you. Thank you for continued opportunities that reflect our well-being. Thank you for life and living. And thank you for bringing together such a diverse group of government and jurisdiction, distinguished men and women who represent the good of our community. It is my candid and sincere prayer that as we contend with the matters of the heart, that your supervision and wisdom may guide us as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. And may our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well, that the people we need may be better. Amen.
[APPLAUSE] ... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number four is approval of the August 5th agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the August 5th agenda, with the exception of to remove item 5B and to add, I'd like to call 9B, Budget Amendment Concerning County Managers' Discretionary Spending.
All right, I got a motion to remove item 5B and to add item 9B, County Manager's Discretionary Spending. And I got a second by Commissioner Berger. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Item 5A, recognition. I have before me a recognition for Mr. David and Terry Wood that I would like to read. They had been presented with their Outstanding Volunteer Recognition Award, but we wanted to, they couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to share with you why David and Terry was recognized. And they was nominated by Ms. Kathy Powers, who is director, executive director for ADTS. And it reads as follows. Dick's Drive-In was opened over 56 years ago, and they have filled the bellies of hungry patrons from all over the county. Their service to the community doesn't end there. For the last 28 years, they have partnered with Meals on Wheels to graciously extend their food services beyond the walls of the restaurant and into the homes of many seniors in our area. Terry and David Wood and their outstanding team has spent Christmas Eve preparing and delivering meals to homebound seniors across the community for nearly three decades. Fran Hughes, Director of Nutrition Services for ADTS, had the pleasure of meeting Terry before Christmas to provide information about the Meals on Wheels clients in need. At that time, she got to personally thank him and convey what their services have meant to the clients of ADTS over the years. For the meal recipients, the volunteers may be the only person they see that day. It's because of their dedicated service to the citizens of Rockingham County that we, the Board of Commissioners for Rockingham County, recognize David and Terry Wood as outstanding volunteers for the month of August. So I think they deserve a round of applause. Okay, gentlemen, the next item on the agenda, item number six. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the consent agenda. These are non-controversial items that have been posted on our website and that the Board of Commissioners have had a chance to review for the last seven days. Is there any questions, gentlemen, on the, any item under the consent agenda? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you have any questions about any item pertaining to the consent agenda, feel free to contact our county manager, and he'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you may have. With that being said, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda. I got a motion by Commissioner Berger. Do I have a second? Second, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, Old Business, Discuss Res zoning Request from MPH, MPD Corporation, care of Mr. Jerry Bowman, case number 2019-008 at Haynes Road, US 158, to rezon from residence protected to neighborhood commercial, conditional district. I'll call on Kerry, it's just not time.
So you had asked to continue the discussion of this rezoning request at the last meeting in reminding those in attendance that the public hearing has been open and closed already. You have asked for some additional information so that you can consider the request. I sent you an addendum to a staff report with some additional conditions that the applicant has offered. Are there any questions about those that, I will tell you the landscaping condition, type one, two, there are three types of landscaping buffers in our ordinance, one, two, and three. One and two are the densest landscape buffers, three is a lot less dense, and it is up to the discretion of staff, in many cases, to make a decision on which of those buffers is appropriate. So in this case, the applicant is saying that you would at least do a type one or two so that the staff understands that that's the end. He's removed two other uses from the permitted uses. He's added some architectural standards in order to further the improvement standards. And these are, these are things that we had talked about, that I spoke to the applicant about, after reviewing the UDL commercial standards. This was one that seemed to be sort of missing from there, seemed that we could do better with. And the last condition is about lighting, for lighting to be pointed downward in what is referred to as a dark sky fashion. The other thing I wanted to comment on, there was some information handed out by citizen during the rezoning, and I reviewed that carefully. I wanted to be sure I hadn't missed anything. I wanted to be sure to share everything that you needed to know, so I made some comments to that. Is everything there understandable? Were there any questions about those explanations? It's often, it's really common, it's the way things are interpreted, and I can promise you that I'm very objective in my interpretation and my review for you. Are there questions about the standards that apply to any non-residential development in Rockingham County? It may not be familiar to you, haven't done a whole lot of commercial development, but those standards will apply anytime a commercially, property is developed commercially. The last thing I wanted to mention is there were some concerns about whether this constituted a spot zoning. And looking to this group of government, as we often do, they, they did have some guidelines as to what sort of considerations to bear in mind with a spot zone. One of those is the size and nature of the tract, and I would like to offer my opinion on that. The tract is relatively small, but it's at a location at a crossroads and within an area that is of our land use plan that supports the request. The second consideration is whether it's compatible with the existing plans, and as I've said in my staff report, I do feel that this request is compatible with the land use plan. Third thing to consider in whether or not this is a spot zoning is the impact of the zoning decision on the landowner, the immediate neighbors, and the surrounding community. And it is my feeling that with the conditions offered, along with the low intensity nature of this district, it allows the property owner to make use of the property, but in a way that minimizes the impact on neighbors and surrounding community. Lastly, the relationship between, and this is one when you have a small property that's being, that's already being used for something, and somebody asks for rezoning that is extremely more intense than what is there, it's a comparison of uses. I don't believe that, that is, in our case, an applicable consideration, although, and I've reached a little bit for this, the current use is vacant, and it's used sometimes for walking paths by adjacent neighbors. The potential use is the lowest possible, except for rural commercial, which is, which is feed stores, basically, the lowest possible intensity of uses that we offer, and so therefore is the most appropriate for changing the use as little as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
The applicant is here. In the case that you have questions, he didn't want to speak, but in the case that you have questions, he is here.
Okay. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, I'll open up for further discussion.
Did anybody sign up to speak on this?
Well, we don't have a, there's no
I know it's not a public hearing, but I still would like to hear what they got to say before I vote on the zoning request.
I don't think we could, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Attorney, we could not open up another public hearing.
No, I'm not asking to ask them for a public hearing. I'm just asking if anybody signed to speak on behalf to allow them to speak during this time.
Oh, you're talking about that that signed up in the public comment section?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, we have one person, and it was the, I'm sorry, we have two people signed up. Two people signed up, but I don't, I don't know that it would be appropriate for them to speak at this time because it would be, we're not having a public hearing, we've closed a public hearing, and I think essentially that's what we'd be doing if we opened it up and accepted it. And more evidence, is that, is that a half figure? You would concur with that, State?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, I would recommend we delay a vote until after the public comment.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion?
I can if you need me, sir.
Well, we've set the agenda, so it would have to be in the form of a motion at this point in time.
I just don't, I just, sir, what I'm trying to say is, they came all the way here to speak for or against this zoning request, and if you're going to allow them to speak on a subject that we already vote on, what good was they coming anyway? So you might as well hear what they got to say since they're here. That's all I'm asking.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Any, all right, I got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I think we need to just clarify, are you asking to move public comment to now, or are you wanting to proceed? If anything else, it needs to be discussed in just the way the votes are
To make it simple, let's move public comment to now so we can hear what the publics have to say on issues they brought before us, and then we can move this zoning request right after the public comment.
If I may, I'd like to hear clearly from our attorney, is there a problem with that? Do you see any, any issues this is going to open?
That would be at the board's discretion. Legislative, the nature of the legislative hearing before, before the board, it's different from a quasi-judicial hearing, meaning that they, the board can accept additional, additional information, additional comments outside of the public, the public hearing. However, if, it's also up to the board's discretion to reschedule, postpone and reschedule another public hearing, which I'm not sure if the board would be, would want to consider that, but of course, it's up to the board's discretion to, to, as long as the board receives the information, all the information together in this type setting, I would not see an issue with that.
Question, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Richardson. Just checking to make sure, nobody has any more questions of Kerry or any other of staff, so that all that would have to happen after we do public comment is allowed?
That's right.
Anybody have any questions? Kerry, you're first.
No, it's not. I mean, I understand what you're
We just
Right.
Is your concern is that you may have questions? You reserve a right to ask Kerry questions based on the comments that were made. I understand that. All right, I have
I'll second that motion.
All right, I got a motion to delay the vote.
Just move public comment to now.
Yeah, well, actually, we're gonna, we'll move comment to now, but we'll put those to the seven minute. All right, at this point in time?
Do you want to vote?
All in favor of moving public comments now say aye.
Aye.
Vote like sign. Okay. All right, Lance, do you want to hear?
The public comment period should be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks shall be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners, not to staff, the audience, or media. The chairperson shall open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker should clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Citizens shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one more attendee's time. This will allow no more than six minutes. The clerk to the Board of Commissioners will keep the time tonight. The time clock will start with three minutes, and if less yielded time, up to six minutes. You'll hear a beep at one minute to launch your, to wrap up your comments. So your sit look a little different this time, I think it's over there, it shows you the minutes you have and seconds you have left. If you already yielded your time, or time is yielded you, then please let the chairperson know in advance. Speakers shall not appear before the board to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures. We use language of a person of nature which insults or demeans any person of which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or her official capacity. The Board of Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral statements. Written statements can be delivered to the county manager's office.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Lance. All right, the first person signed up to speak is Mr. Royce Richardson. Ms. Richardson, you can come forward, give us your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
I understand close this mic, I'm not sure if people in the back can hear that air conditioning's on. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Royce Richardson, and I live at 300 West Hunter Street, Madison. I understand that you all will be discussing the county's shared savings plan during this meeting. Six, six months ago, I had no idea what a shared savings plan was, and I would bet that 95% of folks in the county are not familiar with it either. I have learned that your board might consider reducing the amount that each department in the county has in their shared savings plan by 20%. I can understand that, but I also understand that you might oppose that the shared savings plan for the elections department be reduced to zero. This amounts to in excess of $11,000. These funds, these are funds that this department has earned by meeting certain goals over the years. If the policy is going to be changed now, I don't understand why take away funds that were achieved under the previous policy. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Jerry Bowman?
I don't have anything, I just appeared to ask some questions in case anybody has any.
Mr. Tyrus Tatum? Tyrus, if you would come up and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Tyrus Tatum, I reside at 194 Wall Road, Mayland, North Carolina. Commissioners, I'm here to address the youth outdoor and hunter safety day that's this weekend. It's your hunter safety day. I happen to be the chairman of the Wildlife Committee, and we are putting on an annual youth day for everyone in the audience. It is open to any resident child of Rockingham County, and we ask everyone who is interested in hunter safety and outdoor shooting sports, come to this event. You will get a, the children will get a free t-shirt. It'll be a blaze orange colored t-shirt like this. They also, we will be providing a meal, so children will get a hot dog meal. There will be representatives from the Sheriff's Department, canine dogs, Smokey Bear will be there, Sheriff Page, not putting Sheriff Page in line with Smokey Bear. We'll have residents from the Wildlife Commission, National Turkey Federation, Ducks Unlimited. Each child who comes and participates and registers will get a chance to win a 22 rifle, one child, not each child, one child, 22 rifle. So we ask that all those who are interested in outdoor shooting sports, hunter safety, come to this event. It is this Saturday, it will be at 861 Rocky Ford Road, Reesville, at the Reesville Training Center. I also want to thank the county commissioners for their support of this event, and our ex officio officer, Commissioner Craig Travis, who's always working in this committee. And just ask that everyone, if you've got youth, you've got children, this is a great opportunity to put shooting sports, outdoor recreation back on the map. This is just step one of our goal. Our ultimate goal is to get shooting sports back into a high school in Rockingham County. So those of you who say, wow, that never happened before, twenty years ago, when I taught, we had hunter safety in Rockingham County schools. So this is not new. That's our ultimate goal. We want these other teams around North Carolina who have been winning and bragging, because they don't have any competition, to get competition out of Rockingham County. So that's our ultimate goal. So we encourage everyone to come out, it will be a fun day, have fun. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time.
Tyrus, can you give us the time again? What time is it?
It will start at nine o'clock and run until one o'clock at the training camp.
Mr. Tyrus, real quick, don't forget, shooting bow, fishing, so it's going to be a lot of
Glad you mentioned that. We will shoot 22 rifles, we will shoot skeet, there's a fishing derby, there will be a stand climbing demonstration, and compound bows.
Compound bows, that's right.
It will be a fun day, have fun. We will be giving away free shape, we'll have clean tents there for people to be able to hydrate themselves, as well as something to drink and food, and people will be able to have a good time.
That's right.
Please come to tent. Thank you.
Tyrus, that's true. When you say we will be shooting, you mean the children will be able to actually shoot?
Yes.
Yes, the youth there will be under the instruction of the Wildlife Commission, they will shoot the 22 rifles and the skeet, absolutely. Live fire, that's the only way to draw people to a shooting event is to have live fire. And that's, that's the key. We may be able to do that this month.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for everything you do. Okay, Mr. Travis Phelps, Mr. Phelps, you can come forward to the mic, state your name, give us your address, and you'll have three minutes.
You're starting off with a good name already.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Travis Phelps, I live at 260 Dogwood Acres Lane here in Madison. I want to talk about a cemetery over here that's been, it's called Citizen Cemetery, that's been pretty much abandoned. Our youth group got asked to go out and clean it up, there's waist-deep grass, some of the headstones have been tore up, the main plates, some of the folks couldn't afford the stone itself, so they got metal plates. So when they do go out there and mow over, they end up mowing over the plates. So now we see a grave site, but we don't know who's there. We have looked into some of the laws that state, and I'm looking at archaeology.ncdcr.gov, and it says, on the outline of duties of the county commissioners, they are required to keep a list of all abandoned public cemeteries on file with a register of deed. A copy is also sent to the cemetery estates office. The county commissioners are also required to take control of all abandoned public cemeteries, and may be appropriate whenever sums are deemed necessary for their upkeep. Gentlemen, I'm asking for some, there's a lot of families over there, no one owns the property. So where do we go? What do we do to make sure that it's taken care of for the families in this community? We have dated it back to slavery time, we have nine slaves, 325 lost souls in the cemetery, 38 veterans. It means something to us and the community, not you juniors, to see what we can get you gentlemen to team up and see if we can work something out. Pretty much for our
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Stacy, if you could come forward and state your name and your address. Stand, stand a little bit closer, let me hear you.
Where do I start? If you're talking about the information that was passed out last time, that was me, and I'm a little, yeah, well, let me just say, last meeting, I had four of the five of y'all come up to me and tell me that y'all were so impressed with me. I'm a little unimpressed with y'all, to be quite honest. If you're talking about the information that I passed out, I would like to know what was inaccurate, because the only thing that I passed out was the land use plan, that was highlighted. I did pass out the water shed, which I understand now, after talking to the man at the county department, that there was a portion of the property that is in both of the water sheds. That was maybe an inaccurate statement. I didn't add anything to the land use plan, I highlighted the land use plan. I could sit up here and tell you the 17 guidelines that you're supposed to follow that's in the land use plan, that would tell you to vote no on this rezoning, but you're not going to listen, you don't, that's, it's plainly obvious which way you're going to vote, but it's also going to be plainly obvious what my mission is going to be in 2020, because I care about my community, I care about 158, and I care about keeping Rockingham County in that section of Rockingham County a role. That is what our community cares for. What I handed over was two petitions. One was from last year, with over 300 signatures, saying that we did not want a Dollar General in our neighborhood. Another one is just recently, which I'm sorry, I didn't have a lot of time, because I'm working, and this isn't my job, I'm not a public official, I don't have a lot of time to go door to door, collect signatures, but another petition with signatures saying that we do not want this property rezoned commercial. I would advise you to follow the land use plan, follow the guidelines, vote no on this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would appreciate if I were to speak in explanation.
Ms. Rose Black, Rose, if you could come forward, state your name and your address.
I'm from USC in the town of Landville, North Carolina. And I'm thinking back in the voice, I've heard rumored that one department was going to be eliminated. And I am wondering, is this personal retribution? Is this a vendetta? If so, this is abuse of authority to eliminate one department because someone is upset with somebody.
All right, gentlemen, that concludes the public comment period. All right, we'll go back to old business. That's all right, if that's right. Go back to old business with Haynes Road and 158 rezoning. Is there any questions, Mr. Commissioner, as a result of the comments that you heard? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Homa.
After fair and careful consideration of all the comments made and the information provided, tonight is provided tonight as well as at our last meeting, I make a motion to approve the request as presented with the conditions agreed to.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the request with the conditions agreed to. Do those conditions, do any, need to be specified any clearer than that?
You might say that the conditions-
One and two.
Yeah, they are, they probably ought to be-
Karen.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
I think you used to have a little microphone.
I have to.
This is a petition.
We apologize.
One on the second.
I'm looking at the original staff report to make sure we don't miss anything. So an appropriate motion would be to the conditions as proposed in the application, as well as those listed in the addendum to the staff report.
Conditions as proposed in the application and the addendum.
I'm doing my motion.
And I'm, that would also include, to include statement and analysis?
Yes.
That's okay. So I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hall. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I got a second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose like some?
No.
Let the record reflect that the vote was four to one. Motion passes. Item number nine, Mr. Paul Mary, Strategic Management, Management Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. I'm here tonight to ask the Board to consider like many changes to the county's performance measurement program, which was in discussions that we had in the budget work session that evening. These discussions centered around reducing the amount dedicated to this program, as well as increased oversight and more sustainable annual amounts for the departments. Just to give a little background, this program began in 2006, 2007. It's only nine programs, and it's now running through much every program countywide, which is 13 years. So during that time period, the amount was earned by departments as a part of the program. The goal of this program is to encourage high performance, meeting aggressive goals, and saving county money. So the, I provided a memo, as well as some changes that were recommended. I'll just go through those quickly. First thing is reduction in balances. So all departments in this recommendation's balance are reduced by 20%, unless it would have put them in a negative because of more targeted reductions. Additionally, departments with significant capital and fiscal year 20 budget, as well as those with high balances, have received an additional reduction on top of 20%. In total, the amount of general fund shares items is recommended to be reduced by 46.2% from $725,000 to $390,000. That's the first piece. The second piece is to change the amount of pooled savings that can be eligible for shared savings. Without getting too many details, I think we've covered this. 80% of the amount of operating and capital is not spent at the end of the fiscal year. Under the existing policy, it's eligible for shared savings. We didn't really get close to that amount. That's the max. This flips it on its head, so now it's 20% of that savings eligible for shared savings. The goal is to try to really push that save county money portion of it stronger than we had on top of the performance side. Shared savings amount per employee, as we talked about before, shared savings is earned by multiplying the department's number of employees times $500 in the current plan, times their achievement rate. Under these recommendations, that would reduce that amount to $300 per FTE, which would just sort of further reduce how much they earn this year. Also, something that was discussed in the budget work sessions is 50% minimum threshold for performance measure achievement. Right now, you could have 20% achievement, and that would be applied to your max shared savings, so you wouldn't get nearly as much, but this would put a bottom cap on that. So if you don't get above 50%, you don't get it. And finally, a spending plan requirement of capital balances. Anybody who gets, the department who gets 3% of their last adopted budget in shared savings would have to submit a spending plan to myself and county manager. And anybody who got to 5% wouldn't be able to have anything above that cap. Also, I included in the packet a list of where all these reductions are for capital, and I'm happy to answer any questions about program or staff recommendations.
With, with this proposal, 50% is the threshold they would have to meet, what was the proposal, or what was the policy with the old policy?
There wasn't a minimum threshold.
Any other questions? Commissioner Travis?
Paul, just so the public can understand what we're talking about, is you and your department sets goals for employees and for departments. That's what we're talking about. When they meet their goals, that you, the county, will give them some savings, so they can use for discretionary or whatever that department head wants to use, right?
So kind of two things with that. So this board commissioner sets its annual goals and objectives that it wants to see usually every year. This, these performance measures are how departments are going to achieve the board's vision for those things. So it's, these performance measures tie directly back into whatever the board set for their goals for that year. The second piece is just to say that all requests for these funds have to be approved by both myself and county manager before they can be spent. So departments have some discretion over what they request, but the ultimate decision is the county manager.
The reason I brought it up is, I'm totally against all of that. It's like, we're, we're given a bonus, per se, for an employee to do their job. You understand what I'm saying? You're paying them an incentive to do their job. I don't like that. I don't like the shared savings. I don't like none of it. I wish we could take a step back and redo this whole thing, because I understand what we're trying to do, but that's the society we live in nowadays. We got to reward what they're supposed to be doing anyway.
I think it's the, it's the philosophy of the board. It's kind of carry the stick of progress with this to a certain amount. And I will tell you, the departments are vested in this. They really do think about these goals and fight with me over whether or not they achieve certain goals, so that they can save this money for stuff that they're going to purchase. I gave an example of the last time we talked about this, EMS buying a washing machine. Tax is probably going to request to purchase a vehicle for email, a retail vehicle. So another purchase is made on this, or superfluous, or you think we wouldn't spend money on any of that. It just gives them a little bit more ownership. But I've mentioned-
I mean, it's all taxpayer money to begin with anyway. So it should be all be in the budget. All we're doing is going around the budget and letting them do purchases during the year without going through the commission for approval. That's pretty much all it is, because it's not putting it in our budget. But I understand where we're going, but, you know, I recommend strongly to this board that, you know, if this is the route you want to go, fine, but let's direct the staff for the next coming year to look at what other counties are doing. There's a lot of counties out there that do not have shared savings at all. And I understand why we have shared savings, and we can do it this year. That's fine. We've already set the budget to do this. But we have a whole year for them to come up with a better plan.
The only response I would have to that is, we, we did direct Lance and Paul to come back during the year with another plan, which is what they're bringing tonight. I have no issue whatsoever with them further tweaking this in the future. I do know that departments are vested in this. I've heard from department heads, because what they're seeing is, just an example, DSS, you've got a 20% cut, which is $33,000, and then further reduction is another $60,000. So there are some large amounts that are deemed to be loose. And one of the reasons we directed them to look at this was the total amount that was sitting there in taxpayer money, that they've been sitting there for a while. Now, in the past, we oversaw Head Start, and they did not participate in this.
They did performance measures they haven't earned in shared savings. Is that all the better?
Okay. And we've, we've heard some public comments tonight. Now, we, I do have one thing I'd like to add to what's being presented, and we could put that under overview, and just put it as a second paragraph. To be eligible to participate in shared savings, the department shall meet the following criteria: be funded in whole or in part from or by the county, and all employees are subject to oversight by the county manager, the board of commissioners, or an elected official. Now, that would eliminate elections from shared savings, and the rationale behind that is, we have no control over their employees. We have no control over whether they perform or not perform, or anything that they do. So that would keep it to where county staff would be able to oversee the departments that are subject to, or eligible to earn, shared savings.
Commissioner Richardson, first of all, I concur with what I heard from Commissioner Berger. Question for Paul, does the amount we spend on shared savings account for more than it would cost us otherwise? Does it save the county money to have this program?
I would like to say yes. I think more, more so what it does is encourages high performance as opposed to just doing enough to get by.
It incentivizes.
It incentivizes departments to try to achieve these performance measures. That's why it's, it's very important for setting these every year that we make progress. I do think it encourages, that these changes will further encourage them to save money because that threshold is going to be much less for whether they can earn it. But I think more than anything, you're buying performance with this money that you're allowed to.
If I could follow up just a little bit, I'd direct this to the county manager. This is, in essence, a tool that you use to incentivize employees of the county. What's your take on it?
I'm 100%. Paul and I have talked about this. I'm 100% supportive of the program. It's, the things that they get in there, if you look at the list that they get, it's not frivolous things. It's things that enhance their performance in their departments. And that's one of the criteria we have. How is it going to enhance your performance in your department? And they, once they justify it to Paul, they got to justify it to me. Once it's justified to me, then I concur with their approach.
And it still falls under the limit that you have discretionary authorization.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr.-
I'm sorry, if I could, Paul, based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like it's very important for the manager and yourself to have oversight in coming up with the performance evaluation and justification for the allocation of money to that shared savings plan.
Paul, this incentivized the employee to work as a team and the unit to do, to do a good job, correct?
Absolutely.
And none of these monies goes, we're not buying gift cards and passing them out to the employees, right?
In fact, one of the things I add, just to clarify, in the complaint that is referenced, is that shared savings, they might be used to provide employee bonuses or any other form of additional tax. So it has to do with your department. I think the department has not.
And as Commissioner Travis said, and I agree, I think we definitely need to look at this again in our budget year next year, because one of the things that brought us, brought this to our attention this year was that we had a shared savings total fund balance of over $725,000, something of that nature.
That's one penny on the table.
And we were fast approaching a penny sitting over there with no designation. And my concern with shared savings as a whole, and I'm looking at the program holistically, is that there's opportunities for things to be purchased, capital improvements, that's done as a result of positive shared saving results. And I'm glad that we got the number down. One of the things that we talked about at the budget hearing was getting that multiplier down a little bit in the eligible, because it was growing really quick, especially in some departments with larger number, with more employees. And I'm, I'm fine with incentivizing, but one of my concerns is, on the backside of that, is that it watered down the budget process just a little bit, in that there was things that was purchased outside the budget, approved by the manager, that perhaps was cut in our discussions during our budget workshop. And when we approved the final budget, it may be something that we did not, that we struck from the budget, but with shared savings, it would be purchased. And that's fine, in a sense, but you think about, how do you prioritize a need, and you're really not prioritizing needs within the department, because just because you've got more employees, you might be able to get what got cut from yours. However, if the funding was available, there may have been another department with less employees that priority this commission, this board would have found more important to fund. That's my problem with, that's where I have some concerns. But that being said, I think that we, it is important that we reevaluate it next year. I appreciate the work that you've done on it this year. I appreciate the fact that the, the employees are working hard as a team to meet those goals and objectives set forth by this board. So anyway, that concludes my comments.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, you know, my thing is, I understand completely where y'all are coming from with the Board of Elections having their own board and oversees them. I just feel like, after all these years, you know, all these departments have been part of this shared savings, and they've worked hard to generate them savings over the years. And now to eliminate one department, I can understand why you wanted to eliminate it, but maybe this, they should be given a heads up, saying, starting next year, they will no longer be getting that shared savings. Because that, what is it, 12, 11,000 that someone mentioned, they've worked hard to recur that over the years to, it ain't that much. So at least you need to, you know, leave it where it is right now until the next budget's processed, since the budget has already passed us.
Well, and I agree that we have passed the budget. But we passed a budget. One of the things that we did, included in our budget, was funding for some capital expenses within each department, on the premise that we was reducing our shared savings fund balance
Right.
significantly to the tune of about 300, what, 50,000, 300-some thousand dollars, $390,000. So, and that being said-
Yeah.
And I appreciate the, the work that you did, Lance and Paul, in addressing some of the capital needs in the 1920 budget, with addressing the, looking inward at the shared savings programs to do it within each department.
Right. But you understand what I'm saying?
Well, the only thing that I believe in the past, a department did not have to meet any of the criteria or objectives, and they still shared in the shared savings.
Correct. No, what that model works was multiply whatever their max eligibility would be times their performance measure achievement. So if a department would get 0%-
How about the prior policy?
Even with the prior policy.
Okay.
So if they were to get 0% achievement, it would be 500 times four employees times 0%.
And so they, they generated this 11,000 over, over the years. Am I right, Paul?
Yeah, I'd have to look and see when elections-
I mean, I, look, it's just the board's discretion. I understand completely and honestly where you're coming from. Board of Elections has their own board that oversees their budget. I completely understand what you're coming from. But they've, they've generated this over the years, and they've been part of this from the beginning. So to take it, you pretty much threw out whatever work they performed over the years. So let's let it implement next budget, across cycle, with the wording that you added to it.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Okay. Is there any type of motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve it as amended with the additions that I read in before.
Okay. I got a motion to approve with the amended language under 1.1. Is that Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I got a second motion by Commissioner Berger, a second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Four to one. Let the record reflect the vote, it's four to one, the motion passed. Item B, county manager's discretionary spending.
Under our budget, Section 5 of the Budget Ordinance, we give Lance the discretion to transfer monies up to $50,000. And the manager is, and I've talked to Lance about this, and I think he's in favor of this, at times he gets caught in the middle of different, perhaps, political discussions.
Yes.
And to completely remove him from the middle, because the manager does not want to be and should not be a part of any political decision making, if we can amend Section 5, there that top paragraph about appropriations and his ability to transfer funds not exceeding $50,000, the last sentence, "The county manager or finance officer is hereby authorized to transfer appropriations," and just put comma for all departments except elections, comma, as contained herein under the following conditions, then that would remove Lance from making any budgetary transfers during the year pertaining to that one specific department. And then it's not that they couldn't transfer money, but they would have to come to us in order to make any of those transfers. I think Lance is.
That would be totally beneficial to us. We want to stay out of the political arena and stay more in operations. Say yes, sir.
Okay.
Are we making that motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
I got a motion from Commissioner Berger to add the language to Section.
Section 5 of the Budget Ordinance, and what's on the line is Page 37.
Page 37, Section 5, the last sentence. And would you read the last sentence again?
"County manager or finance officer is hereby authorized to transfer appropriations," and put comma, "for all departments except elections, comma, as contained herein under the following conditions," and then all the conditions that are cited.
Okay. I got a motion by Commissioner Berger. I got a second by Commissioner Travis. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
The only other thing that during our budget process, actually, the Elections Department could not answer many questions pertaining to the $110,000 budget amount for elections. And so we set that money aside, and I believe we're waiting on them at this point to submit a plan to us for us to figure out how much we're going to appropriate. And I know the municipal election is coming up in November. If we could perhaps direct Lance to send a letter to Elections to have something to us by the first meeting in September.
I said the next meeting.
Well, I don't know how.
I don't think they meet until, like, John Eaton, maybe the third week of the month or something, as far as when they meet.
Yes, that's correct.
So that would give them a chance without having call a special meeting.
Okay.
I don't know that it needs a motion. I think it just needs a consensus on it.
We'll make a motion out of just protecting him.
That's right.
I'll second.
All right. I got a motion by Commissioner Berger to request the Board of Elections to submit a plan of action or a spending plan for the upcoming elections by, what was the date? September 1st, is that what we said?
Was that the next meeting?
When's your agenda meeting for that September meeting?
Count.
When's our agenda meeting for the first September meeting?
I don't think it's September.
We'll go for, when's our, yeah, September.
You mean the second meeting in September?
I don't, I don't know.
It's gonna be that Tuesday, right? As far as our meeting.
September 8th. Let's shoot for September the, let's shoot for September the 3rd. That'd be the Monday back after the holiday. We'll shoot for September the 3rd.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first meeting in September. The 8th. 8th. The 3rd. Okay. You're right. Okay. The 3rd and the 17th are the meetings. Yeah. Yeah.
The Elections Board here will see if it fits their purpose.
Yeah. So we get, Royce, can you, how much time you'll need to come up with the plan for?
We can't hear y'all, and I have no idea what the discussion was about. I'll be right back. But we can't hear. I don't know what it was about.
All right. If you want to come up, we'll be glad to talk to you so you can here. How about that?
We'll have to hear it, too.
Did you turn this fan off? Did this fan?
This is loud, and we haven't heard the whole meeting. Yes.
Thank you. We're looking for a date that the, you and the Board of Elections consulting with Tina can come back with a plan for staffing and for the municipal election in June, I mean, in the November, so we can do an allocation. Have y'all sit down and started figuring out how you're gonna do the early voting and what's gonna be needed, the cost associated with the municipal elections?
The early voting plan has to be to the State Board by, I think it's the 27th of August. Of course, our budget for this year has the early voting, which of course is paid for by the towns.
That's right.
Municipality after the election, and also the primary and maybe a secondary for next year. That's already in our 2019-20 budget.
But then we do.
I don't know what you.
Yeah. Okay.
For the voting, there was $110,000 that was presented to us, but your director could not answer questions about how that was computed. So we took that $110,000 and moved it, and we're asking for that plan to be submitted to us so we can figure out how much of that we're going to appropriate. And we're asking you, can you have that to us by the first September meeting? Was our budget not approved by this commission? So.
It was approved, but the $110,000 was set aside.
It's not in your budget.
Y'all are not getting that until we get a plan.
Did that have to do with the early voting? Had to do with all the voting because we couldn't get answers. Okay. We haven't to you.
Okay. Is that something you think you can have done by the end of August? Like, you said you submit to the state on the 27th?
Yeah, the state, that's the early voting plan.
Yeah.
For November.
Well, what we're saying is, this board's gonna get Lance to send you a letter requesting, asking you for the request.
Okay. Just let us know what you want.
It'll be in writing, so you'll get it.
Let us know what you want, we'll get it for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Is there a date? I mean, by September 1st?
Yeah. No, I would shoot for August the 20th.
August 27th.
Yeah. When he submits it to the state and submit it to us, too. How about that?
Well, they submit, you said September, didn't you?
No, August.
Okay. So when they submit there, okay.
Yeah, early voting plan to the state by 27th of August.
That's correct.
So you can take that. That would be perfect.
That worked out perfectly.
If we can get a request, we'll be glad.
We'll take care of it.
I don't think you need a motion on that.
We'll take care of it.
Unless you want to do it anyway, Kevin.
I said we didn't.
Well, I thought we did. I don't know.
I think we done. I bet we've already got a motion on the floor for the 27th. And you got a second? And let's just vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. There you go.
It was all done.
Okay. Next item is reapportments, Board of Health and Human Services, item number 10. Lance Messing.
This should be fairly easy. Just let me run through it. It won't take me a second, if you don't mind. The term for the office for the five members of the Board of Health and Human Services expires on June 30th, 2019, expired. The five members are eligible and willing to serve another four-year term. They are Leanna Lawson, human services, consumer, registered nurse; Nathan McCollum, pharmacist; Teresa Love, social worker; and Judge Pierce, general public member. And they're all agreed to serve again.
I'm making a motion for approval of performance.
As a group, I got a motion by Commissioner Berger. I'm sorry, Commissioner Travis is second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next item is reapportments, Board of Health and Human Services, item number 10. Lance Messing.
This should be fairly easy. Just let me run through it. It won't take me a second, if you don't mind. The term for the office for the five members of the Board of Health and Human Services expires on June 30th, 2019, expired. The five members are eligible and willing to serve another four-year term. They are Leanna Lawson, human services, consumer, registered nurse; Nathan McCollum, pharmacist; Teresa Love, social worker; and Judge Pierce, general public member. And they're all agreed to serve again.
I'm making a motion for approval of performance.
As a group, I got a motion by Commissioner Berger. I'm sorry, Commissioner Travis is second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next item is new business, number 11. Do we have nothing under new business?
That's all.
Okay. Item.
Before we get into Commissioner's comments, I think Mr. Isley is here from the school board, and I know we've had public comments, and I think the only thing he wants to announce is about the school auction.
Yes, sir.
If we could have a minute of time.
Okay. Come on forward and tell us about the auction.
Good. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm Doug Isley, 179 Flat Rock Road, Reefville, school board member. I just want to let the public know and let everybody know if you can rebroadcast this information out to everybody. We're gonna be having three auctions to auction off surplus items through the school system. Our first auction is gonna be this Saturday at 9:30 a.m. at the Old Williamsburg School on Mispah Church Road. And I was trying to bring the address up here, but if you go to Rockingham County Schools' Facebook page, you can see the listing there. There are also photos of all the items. If you want a record player, overhead projector, desk, some nostalgia, just come on down. We got it all. And we would like to, our hopes, my hopes, me personally, my hopes are that we can take this and put this money back to some school improvements and fix some leaks and things across the county. That's just me personally, not speaking on behalf of the board. And thank you, gentlemen, for indulging me. I have a moment of time.
Thank you, Doug. Next item is Commissioner's comments. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to tell Kevin Bone and Town of Madison, thank you for letting us use your facility. Maybe you need to check out that fan so loud back there. That's okay. But thank you again for allowing us to be here for the road show. We do this so we can actually come out and see people that don't have time or the ways or means to actually come to Wentworth to see us. So we appreciate everybody being here. As far as the cemetery, guys, send me some information or give it to the county manager. I kind of vaguely remember talking to someone about this, but it was a while ago. So if you can give me some more information on it, I'd love to see what you're talking about, and maybe I can help a little bit outside the purview of the county. Maybe we can do some fundraising, maybe we can get some churches involved, and maybe we can do something, okay? Mr. Phillips, I appreciate you leading that cause. I know it means a lot to you, and it should to everybody in this county, especially the veterans, and maybe we can get Umar involved, Umark involved, because it's got some historical value to it, seems like. So just reach out to us, and maybe we can help. And again, thank everybody coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, David, and all the people in Madison for hosting us so well. We enjoy being here. Lots of things going on in Madison, especially over around the Dan River, that are gonna be exciting to watch, but we appreciate being able to be part of the action tonight. I want to, again, recognize volunteers throughout the county. And Mr. Tatum, thank you for being a continual volunteer with our youth, and that's a good example of a way that we can help, I wish that D would lead me, that we can help our community at large. And certainly, we've had some recent evidence that gun safety should not be ignored. And finally, I think this nation has suffered a terrible tragedy over the weekend with the two mass shootings, and we need to have those individuals involved. Those losses are irreplaceable, and certainly the families and friends are suffering a lot, but the country is suffering from this. And you're gonna hear a lot of political back and forth, and you're gonna hear special interests. The bottom line is, we need a fix, and I'm not presumed to know the fix, but we need to get behind a way that we can have our firearms, but control who's got those things. It's just uncannable for this nation to suffer this sort of loss unnecessarily time after time. So I would seek you for prayers for the individuals hurt by this tragedy.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Berger?
I just want to thank the Town of Madison as well. Very nice accommodation. We appreciate the turnout. It's always important to see citizens participating in their government. So thank you very much for coming out and being concerned. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. I'll be very brief. I'll thank, thank again Pastor Phillips for being here tonight and leading us in invocation. My friend Jason White for doing our pledge of allegiance. I also want to recognize Mayor David Myers from Madison. We appreciate him being here. Mickey Silvers from Madison, Brenda Platt from Madison, and Bud Carwell from Mayodin. Thank y'all all for being here. Of course, Doug Isley with the school board, and appreciate you being here and sharing with us about the upcoming auctions. And it's a good thing. I appreciate what you're doing with that. We also have several members of the Board of Elections, Bonnie Ferguson, Royce Richardson, Jeff Paris, and Leanna. And we appreciate Leanna being here, too. With that being said, we got a closed session tonight, and we're going to, I don't anticipate we're gonna have anything to talk about when we come out of closed session. So we might. You think we may?
We may.
Okay. We may. We may have something to talk about. So anyway, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.1A1, .11A3, and .11A5.
I make that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Travis. Do I have a second? Second? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We'll go into closed session.
Okay, I call the meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners back to order. We have just a little bit of business to take care of. The first order of business is gonna be a resolution. I'm gonna go to Commissioner, ask Commissioner Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution to extension of sewer lines down I-73 for future growth.
And the amount not to exceed?
$2.5 million.
I got a motion on the floor to extend the sewer lines down I-73 not to exceed $2.5 million for future growth. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
I got a second by Commissioner Hall. Is there any further discussion by anyone on the board? Having no one further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. We have one more piece of business.
We've got a budget amendment to make. We've got a capital project payment. I sure got to transfer $174,600 from the general fund to capital project fund for wastewater, a wastewater project. Make a motion to approve that transfer.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Berger. I'm gonna make Commissioner Richardson second that one. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Is there anything else that we need to discuss? All right, gentlemen, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. I got it by Commissioner Berger before I could finish. Do I have a second?